Can I welcome everyone to this meeting of the Town Forum? It's just after six o'clock. This meeting is being held under the regulations which came into effect on the 4th of April 2020 in response to the COVID-19 situation. So we are meeting virtually rather than in person. My name is councillor Kathleen Becker and I'm the Chair of the Town Forum. There are, as always, a few housekeeping reminders to run through as there are working practices that we have to keep to in response to the regulations. Can I ask that everyone keep their microphones muted and cameras off whilst you're not addressing the meeting because this does reduce background noise and any unintentional disturbances? Can I also advise that the meeting is being audio recorded and livestreamed from the council's website and a video recording will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting? Members and officers where appropriate for each item, please use the chat function to indicate that you wish to speak or to raise a point of order or an explanation and I'll then invite you to speak at the appropriate time. Each member will be invited to speak in turn and therefore please keep contributions as clear and concise as possible. When speaking and referring to agenda papers, we don't have that many today, but when we do, please make sure you reference the page or the paragraph number. And for the duration of this, the duration of this meeting is planned for two hours. So if anyone wants to leave at any point, please, please let us know through the chat function and then I will announce to the meeting that you have, that you have left. Can I ask the Democratic Services Officer to take a roll call of the members to confirm who is presenting, who is present this evening?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, members. Members, if you could just unmute and I'll do a very quick roll call. Councillor Becker, I can, I can see is, is present in the meeting. Councillor Murphy?
Present.
Councillor Crask?
Present.
Councillor Ferguson?
Good evening, present.
Thank you. Councillor Green? Councillor Green? I'll come back to councillor Green, Chair. Councillor Hiscock?
I'm here, yes. Good evening.
Councillor Hutchison?
Yes, good evening, I'm here too.
Councillor Lernies sends her apologies. Councillor Mather? Councillor Mather?
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Scott?
Present.
Councillor Thompson?
Hello, present.
Councillor Todd?
Present.
And councillor Weir?
Present.
Thank you, members. Chair, with the exception of councillor Lernies giving apologies, I'll, I'll check where councillor Green, whether, whether he'll be joining us later on.
Thank you. Can we also just confirm which, who, which of the officers are here this evening?
Thank you, Chair. So this evening, members, we have Richard Botham, Simon Finch, Darren Kennedy, Richard Summers and a number of colleagues from Boylan Summers and myself, Matthew Watson and David Blakenmore from Democratic Services.
Thank you. So we move on to the agenda for tonight's meeting. The first item, apologies, so we have the apologies from councillor Lernies. We will try to track down councillor Green to see if he is attending this evening. Disclosure of interests. Are there any disclosures of interests that need to be made this evening?
Yes, Chair. So it's councillor Hiscock, I need to declare a non-bucaneer interest in that I'm also a county councillor and that some of the items that come up on the agenda may have some bearing on my work as a county councillor.
Thank you.
Yes, Chair, this is Martin Todd and I would want to make the same declaration.
Thank you very much. Moving swiftly, anyone else, anyone else? Councillor Hiscock, your hand is still up, you might... Your virtual hand? Back up, there we go. Thank you. Moving on to two persons announcements, I don't have anything specific this evening to announce, I just wanted to pass on my very great thanks to everybody who participated in the focus groups that led to the production of the handbooks that we're going to be presented with this evening for discussion. I know it's not been the easiest of times for everyone to, to come together and discuss things and think about, think about the city. So really a great thanks from me for all of, for all of that input from, from you, the residents. Thank you. The next item on the agenda are the minutes for the previous meeting. These are on pages five to eight of the Agenda Pack. Can these be agreed as a true record?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. The next item is public participation. Can I confirm we don't have any members of the public?
Correct, Chair, we don't have any members of the public.
So we will move swiftly on to the main item on tonight's agenda, the update on the vision for Winchester. I think, Mr Finch, you are going to be introducing this paper.
Yes, thank you, Chair, yes. I won't be saying too much because we've got the Boylan Summers, the consultants team with us tonight to give you a presentation by way of an update as to where we are in the process and where we're going to move to next. Members will recall that we had a presentation from the same group back in September at the last Town Forum meeting which mapped out the process moving forward, where we had the Handbook Part Ones, which was the end of the scoping exercise. And then we're going to hold some virtual workshops with specific target groups to look at specific topics that came out of that first Handbook One piece of work. That's resulted in the papers that you will have on the agenda this evening, which is Handbook Part Two. And Boylan Summers will be explaining a little bit more about that and how that was produced. And then finally, we will start to outline Handbook Part Three, which is effectively the overarching vision, which is the document that fully draws that to, to a conclusion. And by way of process, we're going to have an event next week on the 1st of December, which is an opportunity for those working groups, et cetera, to say a bit more in person about what they did. So we hope that as many as possible will join us for that. And again, Boylan Summers will say a little bit more about that in due course. And then the final piece, if you like, is to come back to you again in the January Town Forum meeting with a finished, effectively, version of the document for your agreement and approval. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to welcome the Boylan Summers team. I can see we have quite a few of you here today. I'm not sure who's taking the lead this evening.
Hi councillor, I'm going to start the ball rolling. Richard's going to, as last time, share the slideshow that we've got together and we'll all take a turn of running through that, that presentation.
Wonderful, thank you. It's lovely to see you all.
Okay. Right, great. Thanks, Richard. Thank you very much, members, for offering us the, or giving us the opportunity of coming again and speaking to you. As you say, we last spoke to you in September and we're going to cover a little bit of that same ground, just really for context, really, so that, so that the, the Handbook Three, which is the, the key element of tonight's presentation, is obviously in that context and can be hopefully a little bit better understood. So we're also going to run through various elements of what we've been doing. But, Richard, if you could just move to that first slide, just for the benefit of, of anybody who might conceivably be watching online or wherever. The group of people who've been working on this project throughout the whole year and who, I think most of you will have met and obviously would have presented last time around, is those five people on that slide in front of you there. As I say, we'll all be speaking to various of the slides as we move through. Richard, if you'd like to move on to the next, on to the next one. This is the brief that we responded to at the turn of last year, or turn of this year, perhaps. And the key point, as we've made before, is that the last sentence, that the key question was, what does Winchester want? And we feel and we reassure by the feedback we've had so far over the last several weeks that we believe we've, we've answered that question and we'll lay that out in a bit more detail later on. Richard, if you could move to the next slide. So just so that we're all clear about what we're going to run through, we haven't got hundreds of slides, just to reassure you, we're not going to drone on all night, but we have, we do want to cover these four points. So we're going to talk about the working groups that Simon's briefly touched on in his introduction a minute ago. We'll describe what this open house event is next, a week to date, Tuesday the first. We will outline the engagement to date, which, as you all know, has been largely online, but there's been some really valuable contributions from people in one-to-one interviews. We'll also talk about the Handbook Part One and Part Two, which have, which, which have obviously been evolved through the process and, and touch on and explain Handbook Part Three, which hasn't been put into the public domain to date. And so it's, this is a first opportunity for people outside of the kind of small group of officers and members who've been working with us closely to, to hear about that and understand that. And so hopefully that will be clear by the end of the presentation. Richard, if you could just move on to the next one. So the working groups, again, Simon touched on this, the, the working groups that we talked about in September, the meeting that we had on the 17th September was, as you'll remember, immediately prior to the start of those groups. Five target groups, five targets rather, five groups. The, obviously, the, the idea was that we would identify targets rather than themes because we wanted to accentuate and emphasise delivery and action and projects throughout rather than sort of broad-brush subjects. And we wanted to emphasise, as I say, actionable projects. So the working groups... And if we can click on to the next slide, Richard. What, what we had was around about 50 people split into those five groups, with us, five whose names you saw a moment ago, each taking one of the groups and facilitating their discussion. So we had four sessions, obviously, over four weeks. So it, so it was pretty busy, particularly, obviously, on the day of the group, but also in between in terms of feeding ideas backwards and forwards, creating blog posts that were put on to the website and are still there at each, from each group in each week. And the brief to ourselves, if you, if you like, was, is, is the text in non-bold, if that's the right phrase. So we didn't want a talking shop. Everybody was very clear that, sometimes very explicitly, that their only involvement in the groups would be if they were not a talking shop, but they were aiming at actionable projects. So the idea of each of the groups was to identify actionable projects, quite often at small scales, at a community scale perhaps, that actually or theoretically be, be implemented in the short term. We also, we also took some, did some research within the groups and each of them created Handbook Two, which Timo will talk about in a moment. Each group did go off in different directions, but actually the ground that they trod was quite, was quite often the same, or touched on at least. They didn't cover the same ground necessarily, but they did often reflect the same concerns and kind of thinking. And as I said a moment ago, the idea was that at each stage they would generate content, if you like, outputs from, that would enable people outside of the groups to input into the groups. So the blog posts were put on weekly. They, they generated quite a bit of feedback from people beyond the groups and those, that feedback was fed back to the groups. So there was a kind of loop going on, which was quite interesting. And then at the end of the process, Handbook Twos were created. Richard, can you move on? Oh, there we go. So before I hand over to Laura to talk about the engagement side of things, just wanted to touch on, and we'll come back to this at the end, the open house event that we're going to stage, if you like, next Tuesday. So this is unfortunately going to be yet another online event, but, but hopefully it will be quite interesting and engaging. There's a various kind of roles to this event. In part, it's about launching the draft vision. It's also an opportunity for the working groups to come back together. On the 22nd of September, they met together in a, in a kind of very large Zoom group before breaking into their various, to their five groups. So it's an opportunity for them to come back and talk about their different experiences and, as I say here, receive their thanks, our thanks rather, as well. We want to put across some of the key messages in the vision and, and discuss those in a kind of pretty informal setting. And we say here that there's a sort of informal ceremony, there's a sort of passing from a joint project which we've been running together with the council, members and officers and the working groups. A passing from us, if you like, from the, from the consultant team entirely to Winchester in the, in its various forms, clearly the, the Town Forum, all other parts of, of the sort of local authority of the City Council, but also the working groups themselves and everybody else who's got an interest in, in delivering the vision. Okay, Richard, can you move on? Laura, over to you.
Okay, great, thanks, Richard, and good evening, everybody. It's great to be here. So I'm, I'm going to be just walking through the different aspects that we, we looked at or different avenues that we took for engaging with the people of Winchester across the, well, over the last year in order to inform not only the Handbook Part One, Part Two, but also obviously the final section as well. Starting off with the direct conversations, Jenny, as part of our team, actually went out on the streets and talked with a number of the public on various aspects that they liked or disliked about the city or what they wanted to see for the future, which then culminated into these 29 street audio tracks that we embedded into the project website, One Great Win. Really great coverage really of, of different demographics and different aspects within those and clearly very interested by the, the people who came to the website because we've had over a thousand plays on those themselves. So yeah, really great insight and first insight depth that we had engaging with the public on that front. And then, Richard, if you could just go to the next slide? So then from here, we also held 66 one-hour interviews, mostly on phone or online, but I think towards the, it would, I think it's towards the end of that process, a couple of you went out and did some face-to-face ones when we could outside in the, in the city itself. But as you can see from this long list of very different demographics and different backgrounds, we really captured quite a lot of in-depth conversations with a number of different people from the city, which really helped inform the whole process of then getting to that stage two of looking at the, the topics that we wanted to delve into for the working group stage. So next slide, please, Richard. So further to that then, with other direct conversations, we also took a lot of it online and encouraged anybody who came to the One Great Win website to take a digital walk with us. We did that through, obviously, the open source Google Map approach, but that really gave us an opportunity to look at the city spatially and to see how things would impact or different aspects that people really wanted to share with regards to the city visually for us to see, which was really insightful actually and quite in-depth in many, in many ways. We kept that up and embedded onto the website. So again, if anybody wanted to look at it in more depth, they could, or equally, you know, go on a digital walk themselves. You can really see here from the visual that how much that stretched across the city. It wasn't just focused on the town centre as well. Okay, next slide. And so just to share some stats with you from, obviously, the central hub of all of our activity, the One Great Win website. And it attracted over two and a half thousand unique visitors since we went live in April, which is really encouraging number for a new website. Most visited pages were the homepage naturally, but also the working group blogs that Richard mentioned earlier, where we invited Winchester to start to talk to Winchester. So really encouraging that group loop session where the groups could share what they did in their working group stage up online through the blogs, but then invite the public who weren't within the groups to share their feedback. Most feedback we actually got was through social media, but that's not a surprise really. Most people feel more comfortable sharing their thoughts on a social media platform as opposed to a website through comments. But we did quite get, you know, receive quite a few comments directly through the website as well, which then did inform more discussion within the working groups, which was great to see. A lot of people stayed on the website for more than two and a half minutes, which is also really encouraging. So it just showed that they were actually reading what was put up there as well. A lot of the traffic sources were direct searches, that's through, you know, any direct links that were sent out through emails or otherwise. But then 40% was from social, our social campaign, that again started in April and covered three platforms, which I'll go into in more detail in a second. But also encouragingly, there was 14%, which was organic search, which essentially just means people typed in One Great Win into the, into Google or Winchester Vision 2030. And they were presented with a project website. So we do feel that we did get quite a lot of coverage in that sense and we were able to engage with, with the public. And just as a, as a follow-up there, we had over a thousand listens on the SoundCloud Winchester Stories. So everyone got to hear what we were talking about, which is fantastic. Okay, next slide, Richard. Okay, thank you. So as I've just mentioned, we covered social media across three main platforms, which was Facebook, Twitter and Instagram, which will be on the next slide shortly. I won't go through all the details of the, the analytics there, I don't want to bore you too much, but it was well received with Facebook, we reached over 10K with all of the posts combined and a lot of click-throughs through to the website and reactions, comments and shares, which was encouraging. The real winner of all the platforms really was Twitter. We had over 190, yeah, over 190 retweets and replies. Most of that was through the Winchester blogs, through the working group phase. And we had an average of 2.9 engagement, which basically means replies, comments and retweets. So and according to Twitter themselves, anything over 0.5 or 1% is great. So obviously 2.9% is pretty phenomenal for such a short campaign in, in relative terms. So then through Instagram, we did have a good interaction. This is a very sort of slightly different demographic reach, so 64% of the followers were between 18 to 44 years old and the majority of those were female. So what we found was we got a lot more engagement with things like the, the Young Women Design Forum that Jenny led on throughout the working great, working group phase as well, and a lot more comments and insights from, from youth organisations, et cetera, on that platform, which is a, thought I'd share that as a general interest point of view from the insights side of things. And that's it really, from my side, from all the digital engagement.
Great, thank you, Laura. From that rich summer of engagement, we then as a team were tasked with pulling together first understandings about it. And we made these, for those who can see the video, our handbooks. Many of you will have seen these before, will have read them through. We made physical copies to send out to the teams that were going to take part, that we were inviting to join our group. And we always devise these as a first in a trilogy of understanding, so that what we publish effectively is like a sequence of the process we were working through. Part One was absolutely written by us as a team. It was us bringing our sense-making and understanding to see what the first theme's for, and it sets out the first key finding from that engagement phase. And it was a significant one, which we've shared before, that essentially Winchester has so many assets, passions, insights, but a sense of stuckness. And it became clear to us that the challenge for Winchester therefore was not what to build, what to pursue, what to envision, but how you do it, the process. So we devised these as a kind of instruction manual for the working phase. Richard, if you could tick us on to the next slide. And you can see there from that slide that we wrote these very much as a kind of an introduction to what was going to happen in the working groups to give out specifically to those we'd invited to join us around the table and to give them an idea of what this process would involve. Can you stick us on to the next one, Rich? Which brings us to Handbook Two, which we're just finishing right now, we're kind of signing them off as we speak. These are an extension of Handbook Part One, but these were not written by us. These were written very much by the people of Winchester, those that we invited around the table. And they are a record of what happened in those five very different but overlapping groups. It was fascinating swapping notes as a team of five of us, each one of us looking after a different topic, a different team. Dear, how much had overlapped in each week as the process unfolded and how much had been different? And then we put those together into a kind of scrapbook memento of what was said, as suggestions, and an example of the process. And for us, we, you know, we felt very entrusted by you and by the Winchester Town Forum and the people of Winchester effectively to engage in this whole process. And this, at this point, was us handing over trust, helping to try and demonstrate the building of trust in our relationships to the people of Winchester, that they would use this process to start bringing ideas. And it was a leap of faith when you first opened the invitations, carefully selected, to get a different mix of people around the table, what will they have to say to each other, will they engage? And it proved fascinating for all of us, a very energising, interesting project, recording a wealth of stuff in Handbook's Part Two, which we will, along with Part One, be putting up onto the website shortly. And you can see here, it's very much a kind of visual snapshot of the conversations and the moods, and each one's a bit different but overlaps. So I'll now hand over to Richard, I think it's Richard Easton now, to talk about Handbook Part Three and where we went from here.
Yes, thank you, Timo. Am I, can people here see me okay? Because I'm on screen share at the moment, so it's difficult to follow, but one thing that I just wanted to talk about here, that Timo's put in a lot of really good work to get the books into shape here, and this spread shows the, the diverse nature of each of those five working groups. But what we started to find is that they were looking at often the same issues but from a different angle. And it was from this that we started to, as a team, reflect on what each of the groups had done and try and find that common ground and understand the consensus that was emerging. And that led us to the phase following the working groups to prepare Part Three of this project. And it's Handbook Part Three, so the final part of this trilogy, as it were. It refers to Part One and Two, so they're not, they need to be considered as a set, they can't really be seen independently of one another, because they draw upon the lessons of the research in Part One and the, the great ideas that came out of Part Two. And Part Three brings that to some sort of recommendation stage. And what it does, it sets out a new way of working for the city, which is essentially action through collaboration. What came up again and again was that not enough action happened in Winchester and maybe the challenges that it was facing with often, maybe the wrong scale and not making headway in the way they wanted. So it sets out the principles and strategies that comprise this vision. And the vision is about getting things done. And the two little arrow bullet points here, they've been shared online and in public meetings, so this, you know, this isn't new really. Part Three brings together and makes, puts on the, on the page really, ideas that have already been tested. And they were tested and developed and finessed by the working groups themselves. The very act of creating working groups that met on a weekly basis over a month to develop ideas is in a sense testing out that vision idea. We were, we were sort of... Uh, we were, we were sort of following our own prescription, as it were, to see if it worked. And it did. And as Timo said, there's a really great set of handbooks full of ideas and things that not, not binding ideas, but ideas that will take the city where people want it to go. So part three is about implementation, but that implementation doesn't land at the door of the city council exclusively. Uh, all public agencies, the county council, the parish councils maybe as well in different guises, the city council, private organisation, community groups and individuals all have a role to play. And the, and the handbook sets out where that is. This is a key sort of summary of the structure of handbook part three. Um, it's formed around three key principles. And the first is the spatial element, the map-based element, as it were. And from the earliest days, we were told about the need for this vision to have a sort of geographical coverage. It needs to reflect sort of the mapping of the city and also have a role to play in the local plan process. And we know the local plan processes go through a bit of a hiatus at the moment as it reconfigures itself around what the white paper might be asking for. But we have made that sure our vision has a spatial dimension to it. But in this instance, it's a city made by walking. All five groups talked in one way or another about the pedestrian environment, about exploring the city on two feet. It's a remarkably compact place, Winchester. And if it didn't exploit that compact walkable nature, it would be missing out on a great opportunity. So the spatial dimension made through walking is one of the principles. The second one is people power. Every, so every group talked about how frustrated community groups and individuals felt at not being able to shape and influence the places where they live. So we've tried through handbook part three to set out mechanisms that enable communities, enable communities to do things, to, to express themselves and to make change. And the, the final principle, the third one, is auditing and sharing, sharing resources, creating data. And that actual creation of data and creation of the audit is an empowering act in itself. So those three principles are around the new way of working that handbook part three advocates. The six values that are throughout all of this is about 100 small wins. So I know our project has been working under the banner of One Great Win, but we think actually, and a sort of an ironic twist, lots of small projects are what the city really needs to build confidence and prove it can collaborate in the way it needs. Resilient communities will come out of that collaboration. We also need a can-do approach in Winchester, not what can't happen, but what can happen. And actually, that's the default, let's make something happen. How do we do that? Leadership through listening is a, is one of the values and that we know the city council's made great efforts in the past. And we've heard about that and they deserve credit where that has, that has taken place. But at the same time, there's been a frustration that that listening doesn't seem to have been acted upon. And they feel maybe it's been tokenistic in, in part, even if that was never the intention. So the idea of the leadership of the, the city, and again, it's not just the city council, but the leadership really does need to listen closely to what's being asked for. The fifteen minute city, which we'll explain in a minute, is a, is a way of thinking, not just a geographical planning, urban planning, urban design thing, but it's a way of thinking that can embed itself across the city and, and all the different strands of work that the city council and its partners need to do. And we think that has enormous value, not just in terms of movement and the climate crisis and about resource efficiency, but in community and isolation and loneliness and friendship groups and so on. And the final point of this, the critical values about openness to new ideas, being flexible and being responsive. Um, we're trying to advocate, while we've got some strong principles and values here, the idea that things are changing rapidly in the world we're in and being open to new ideas and responding to new technology and responding to new ways of thinking is part of that value system that handbook part three sets out. I'm going to hand over now, um, to Jenny to explain some of those in a bit more detail.
Hello, yes, hi. Um, so one of the first kind of principles that two of the working groups really came up with was the idea of the fifteen minute city. And this is a, this is a kind of concept, I guess, which is current at the moment. I think the mayor of Paris is redesigning the whole city on the basis of the fifteen minute city. And, um, the kind of basic premise of the city is that you shift the emphasis away from kind of mobility and transport and towards activity, uh, towards access and proximity. So the emphasis is on making, um, basic goods, services and facilities such as shops, medical centres, leisure facilities, as well as places to meet friends, socialise, access to culture or community activities, all within a fifteen minute walk of your door. So it's not so, it's not so much a spatial thing where you would say, let's block out fifteen minute cities across, across Winchester. It's about saying, from whichever front door you leave from, you should be able to have proximity to all of those kind of goods and, uh, services and facilities. Um, the emphasis on the local scale or, or on the scale of locality, um, places an emphasis on the cross, crossovers between communities. And this was something that came up in a lot of the working groups, was the idea that people wanted to focus on overlaps and, um, look for places where, for example, generations in, you know, intergenerational spaces where people could meet and connect. Um, and again, a focus on the street, uh, and kind of, um, being on the street and being able to connect with people simply by kind of walking down the road and saying hello to someone. And that, that's really important to people. So this idea of the fifteen minute city really kind of connects to that desire for localness. And of course, we're living through a time of a kind of cultural shift towards a lot more people working from home. And this kind of exponentially increases the need for the kind of local and the potential and, um, you know, opportunity that this idea of a kind of localism presents. So we'll move on to the next slide. Um, and so working with this idea of, of the fifteen minute city, which was kind of coming up through a lot of the groups, we started to think about the idea of the streets and spaces across Winchester. And, um, really, I suppose this kind of started to become an idea of, um, a kind of a set of walking groups, almost like a sub-city or a meta-city that you could navigate without ever walking on a busy road or what, you know, being able to walk through, um, and kind of being able to appreciate kind of trees or great design or nice kind of natural environments. Um, and then as you're walking through these networks, encountering perhaps a lovely park or a small, uh, public space where people could sit down, um, and kind of meet. And so this idea of, um, Winchester as a series of, of kind of networks and meeting spaces started to emerge and it emerged in all groups. Um, it emerged in the lifetimes group through the idea that, um, people wanted to be able to walk their kids to school without worrying about traffic or people wanted to be able to let their older children have a bit more independence. But also through the idea that, um, walking and being out on the city, out in the city is a way to connect. You know, it's a space of, of, um, you know, walking your kids to school is also a chance to talk and, and kind of be with each other. Similarly, the culture group talked about the idea of, um, kind of cultural corridors. So areas where you could walk into the city, where you would simply encounter kind of, um, uh, I don't know, galleries, shops, um, areas where you could engage with kind of the cultural activity that is already going on in the city. Or the movement group, who were kind of much more interested in kind of active travel and, and cutting down need for cars within the city. So this idea of the streets and spaces of Winchester becoming much more like the social spaces of the city and reflecting really the culture of the Hat Fair, but kind of 365 days a year. Okay, um, so move on to the next slide. Um, and this, this leads us on to the idea of the co-created city. Um, the co-created city is, is kind of another very current phrase. Um, in its most basic, um, interpretation, uh, we, we think about the co-created city as a, a kind of pleasing scene, if you like, somewhere where you might look out onto, um, a street and see someone having, uh, a coffee, someone walking down the road with their family, another person getting off a bike, you know. This, this idea of how we participate in the city in its most basic form is a co-created city. But we can take that one step further and start to think about the, the public space that we can create that better facilitates a kind of co-created city. And also the mechanisms that are in place that can unlock those public spaces to local communities and agencies. So for example, designing public space that kind of has an open-endedness to it. You know, you might have, you might have a little town square where you'd have like a pizza van turn up on a, on a Tuesday and a market stall there on a Wednesday. And perhaps someone's having a kid, kids' party there on a Saturday. Um, and that you have sort of public space that has an open-endedness to it. But simultaneously, you also need to put mechanisms in place that enable members of the community to be able to use that public space and, and to feel like they have kind of ownership over it and that they can do those things there. Okay.
Thanks Jenny. Um, another two examples of what this handbook take part three takes us is about the resource audit. And the resource audit, what this means is there's a lot of information out there that we don't yet know about. And the group that I was particularly involved in was the movement group. And they were interested in not counting traffic or pedestrian counts or cycling counts, or maybe some of them are obvious things. But one thing they were curious about is what business really feels about a reduction in car movements? Because there was a sense that some of the larger businesses may get amplified in, in the, the Hampshire Chronicle. And actually, there's a, a wealth of small businesses that would benefit from a better pedestrian cycling environment that does require some give and take on road space and distribution of, of space. So the research there was, can we, can we audit local businesses just to find out? Business isn't a single thing with a single voice, let's find out more about it. And for example, the culture group felt that an audit of cultural activity and five thousand or so practitioners in, in the cultural sector in Winchester, can we find out exactly what they're up to and identify the value that brings? So auditing from these five topic groups became a theme. And we think handbook three, um, expresses this as a, as a means of collaborative collaborating. The ecology group that Timo is involved in felt that a mapping exercise of, um, heritage assets, but also areas such as green space in the city that have a, a cultural value, but maybe aren't seen as such, would be, uh, again, something that would provide that rich data source that the vision needs. So we know what ingredients the city has on offer. Another great example of the audit was, uh, and it comes back to this co-creation message that Jenny's just described, is that we noticed a need for new homes in the city. And the home group said, well, what if through an audit of open spaces, an audit of gap sites around the city, led, perhaps led by residents, but facilitated by the city council, the call for sites process could be turned on its head? The residents could, of Winchester could identify where housing could go and that could feed into the local plan. And that co-creation activity through auditing for home building across the city could be a great example of this inaction in a practical sense. Meanwhile, lifetimes group talked about auditing for things such as, uh, child-friendly play areas or places that are really amenable to the older population. And again, that activity of, of cataloguing what's out there was part of that process. So this example on screen now is a map. And each of the handbook part twos contains a map of this sort that pinpoints out areas that have a relevance to that particular target working group. And some of those will overlap, whether hotspots, that the same bit of the city is relevant to movement as it is to ecology and so on. So the mapping element, we have brought forward very strongly in handbook two in a visual sense. Handbook three then starts to say, what does mapping mean in terms of auditing? And what types of data can we develop through this vision over the next decade? Certainly in the first part of the decade to give you that, that information and data to work with. And this brings us to this sort of conclusion of this part of the slide, really, the map is the territory. And there's something really important about map making and auditing that we've just talked about, that that in itself gives power to people. And that power to the people message, which is one of our key principles, going out there with a clipboard in small groups, the rule of six is in, in force at the moment. And it still works within that, you know, six people out mapping what is in their neighbourhood from these different angles, ecology, home, lifetimes, culture and movement. And that data and that activity in itself provides you through the vision with, with what's, what needs to be acted upon and how you take it forward. So creating new connections and mapping is a creative act in itself. And that's the way that the vision wants to, uh, express the new way of working. What this does, it does not set out a series of projects that the city council need to implement. The projects that have been talked about are all in handbook two. And there's from quite ambitious ones that may cost a lot of money and may take a lot of time, to some quite simple ones that could happen very quickly. Handbook two is where you'll find the project list. And there's five handbooks with many projects across all of them. Handbook three is about the mechanisms, about the ways of working, which will drive forward the new decade in a collaborative, uh, approach, which has maybe been different to previous endeavors in Winchester.
Thanks, Richard. Um, just a couple of slides to conclude. I don't want to, uh, was, I'm te- I'm tempted to look at this slide and, and kind of think of, um, a kind of overall summary of the vision. And I think that's something that I want to avoid, we want to avoid. There, I don't think there is any, uh, one liner necessarily that sums up the, the, the vision. Um, I think the, the, the handbook three is described by Jenny and Richard a moment ago is probably the, the go-to explanation. The point about this, uh, slide and the next one that follows it is about a, uh, difference or a, um, shift in emphasis from big master plans, big projects, what some, but sometimes, I'm not sure when I've heard this in a Winchester context, but certainly heard it in lots of, uh, sort of, um, local authority contexts, transformational change. If we can just deliver that one thing, then everything will be better. And I think the, no, this isn't necessarily saying that large projects are a problem at all. It, what it's saying is perhaps the idea, rather than going from this big master plan, all eggs in, all your eggs in one basket, risky approach, is to cue next slide. Do look at a hundred small wins and build from that point. Go into the community. One of the things that you made us very clear about, we focused on from the start, is about spreading the, uh, our thinking across the whole footprint of the city. And it's, uh, and that's come back from the working groups as well, that they are, uh, whilst everybody's got an opinion about what's going on in the city centre, they are equally, if not more concerned and interested in what could be better, uh, in their neighbourhoods. Um, and, and so there's a scope for doing, as I say, potentially a hundred small projects as, as a starting base across the city footprint. And then the, the, the other point, the, which picks up on that, uh, on, on what we've heard is that it's only by including everybody that the city can really be successful, um, and provide for everybody. So, you know, this is a, this is a, um, uh, a very ambitious aim. And the, the vision is, is ambitious and aspirational and all those things that, that no doubt we think vision should be. One of them, in this case though, it's not about delivering, uh, a big shiny project in any particular one location, but it's about spreading, uh, the, um, responsibility and the opportunities across the, the widest, uh, cross-section of the community in Winchester. So that's the conclusion of our, um, uh, presentation this evening. Richard, if you can just flick on to the last point, oh. Because this is, uh, what will be on our website, uh, from tomorrow, which is a flyer effectively for the, um, event that we've got, um, going on next week. This is, as I said earlier, uh, something where, uh, it's an open house, it's an informal forum, um, a drop-in event. Um, we hope lots of people will come along, will be there. We hope everybody from this, uh, meeting will be there and, and lots of other people as well. Um, thank you very much. Back to councillor Becca.
Thank you all. That's really fascinating stuff. And I just want to pass on my thanks to all of you as well for being so flexible in this unprecedented year. This isn't what we envisaged, uh, the process being when we met at, was it just before Christmas last year? So thank you very much for what you've been able to achieve this year. I think it may actually be better than what we, what we've, how we thought the process was going to run. So thank you. Start with questions. I don't see anything in the chat. Does someone want to kick off questions on this report? Uh, I know there's been, so there's the presentation that we've just had, which was circulated to everybody today. There are also the draft handbooks and the papers. Councillor Mather, thank you for kicking us off. There are also the draft handbooks and the papers. Councillor Mather, thank you for kicking us off.
Um, okay, um, I was interested to know how the fifty or so people were selected. I recognise some names in there. Um, having, getting a bit long in the tooth and having a long time. Uh, a lot of them I don't recognise. I mean, I'm not surprised to see some of the names in there because they have a tradition of featuring largely in any consultation that, uh, making sure that they do kind of feature quite um, uh, uh, largely in any consultation that's carried out in Winchester. But um, I, I, I was hoping that there was a, had there had been a balance between um, say radical um, kind of green, kind of conservative, kind of broad middle church kind of, um, you know, I, 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 I know that you tried to achieve a balance, but I'm, I'm just wondering how you did it.
Okay, well, um, if I could, is that okay if I answer that?
Yeah, of course, please.
We uh, we tried to, as you say, get a, get as balanced a group as we could. Um, we, some of the people we had, had featured in our interviews and therefore we knew them reasonably well. Some of them were um, suggested by um, uh, uh, other people either in, through, through those interviews. Um, or through third parties. Some of, some of the, uh, the members of the group um, asked to be involved via the, the website or the social media, um, and that, um, and, and that was well on avenue. Uh, the balance was, one of the things that, that we've talked about in, in previous meetings that um, and was something that we were keen to achieve was, was a kind of a balancing in terms of gender and ethnicity and so on. We were to some extent uh, successful in that. Uh, we were very successful from a gender point of view. Uh, but uh, it, it's one of those things where, um, you know, you ask a hundred people and, and thirty people say they would like to be involved. So it, you know, it's, it's quite a difficult task. I'm sure you appreciate that anyway. Um, but we certainly strove very keenly to, to achieve that, um, that balance and that mix.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Oh, councillor Mather, you, did you have a follow-up? No, your hand's still up. Councillor Ferguson, I think you were next. And then councillor Hiscock.
Um, yes, I just wanted to thank the board and Summers team. There is so much in here to digest and to think through. Um, it, no, it's great. Um, I loved the stuff around um, the collaboration, the idea of the order, the mapping process. Um, you know, creating other centres of the city which aren't the centre. Um, and the, the three, six, five festival culture, all of this stuff's really exciting. Um, my question is, um, you, you mentioned the report that um, sometimes those communities that are already well-established or kind of have a voice um, will take this kind of vision forward, you know, for their area. So what if anything can be done in this process to guard against our communities where they don't have that community structure, they don't have that voice to help them, you know, make these one, you know, to five or six of these hundred wins? How do we help them still be involved in that process? And, and I think you almost answered, but I'm not quite sure. I was going to ask whether we, in the people who are involved in the process, whether we had that geographical mix. So did we make sure that we picked up people from across the, the city? So we had a voice from Stanmore, we had a voice from Wimmer, we had a voice from Highclere. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm not sure who wants to pick this up. Uh, Richard, one of the Richards? Both of the Richards, all of the Richards.
Yeah, I'll just say, so we, we, we certainly did have a good geographical mix. Um, we, it, it, it's a very, it was very difficult, it's very difficult. We could have, we could have spent a lot of, a lot of your budget, um, you know, getting scientific about it. So uh, there, there was a, there was a, an aim to be, uh, well, very much a focus on being balanced in terms of the geography of the members. Um, but ultimately we needed to, we needed to get the groups together and, and uh, in a way, one of the, one of the um, criteria for being included or being, being invited was a willingness to, to, to join the group, but purely on an individual basis. One of the things that we were very keen to avoid, if you like, was people representing others. So people on the, people on behalf of a large group of, you know, perhaps a single issue group or whatever. Um, so we wanted people to come along. Um, and to some extent, we tried to protect them as well so that they, that they uh, had the um, the confidence to speak on purely on their own behalf. Um, uh, and, and, and not really be exposed to um, kind of, you know, I don't know, pressure from, from outside to, to um, uh, to take any particular line.
Your microphone's off Jenny.
Okay, so yeah, also we talked about um, the idea about kind of res, you know, resources going forwards. And we, we see this problem uh, potentially of, you know, the, the neighbourhoods that are already doing really well, they go off and they have their fantastic, you know, fifteen-minute cities that just turn into these like nice PIMs parties or something. And then um, you, you've got the, the other areas that perhaps aren't so well supported. And, and what we've kind of suggested is that actually um, this is a way to really focus resources and make sure the areas that need them, get the resources put in place. Um, and that actually perhaps they get more of the kind of front-loaded stuff in terms of like the community engagement officer being sort of onsite and the, um, you know, one of the suggestions is about the kind of creative zones, you know, perhaps you focus the creative zones in those areas. So that there's just more activity and energy kind of building there. So we do recognise that the fifteen-minute city does have this potential um, challenge of, of kind of certain neighbourhoods not benefiting from it as much. But, but suggest that in that case, that is where the, that's where the kind of support and the resources go in order to kind of preempt that possible um, inequality.
I just, just a quick follow-up to that, that there is a part in the report that says along those lines that it's fine for the city to relinquish a bit of control and relinquish a bit of power and devolve that out. But the, the, the other side is that the communities who've been asking for that need to respond in kind, which is work in a collaborative way. And that message is as much aimed at those places that are well organised already to actually be a bit humble about the fact that that's coming their way. They're, they're for it. And then when they get it, they don't quite know what to do about it. So there's two sides to it. As Jane said, there's communities that perhaps aren't organised or have the resources in place yet. And there are others that, and I'll be careful here, maybe you're a bit um, think they know what to do and maybe just need to reflect a bit. Maybe they've got, they can learn as well. I think there's learning curve on all sides here. And part, part of handbook part three sets out about capacity building. And that capacity is not just for those that are less organised as it were, but for the others as well.
Fine, thanks, thank you, really good answers, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, councillor Kresk, oh, who was next? Councillor Kresk or councillor Hiscock? Councillor Hiscock.
Okay, I'm not sure who it was, but yeah, um, I'm glad to say that you've got Paul Spencer down there. Um, who's the chairman or the chief exec of the bid. And I'm sure that he was able to give his unique perspective without giving a corporate view. Um, but I was wondering whether you were able to do the same thing with the two universities? Whether you could find individuals who are prepared to put their perspective, but not the corporate view of the university's future in Winchester and how they would like Winchester to develop and look after their people.
There was, I think there were a couple of university people, not representative, but university people across the groups. And yes, Paul was in one of the groups too, as a, someone that has a, a relationship with the city from childhood, rather than just being there on behalf of his current, current position.
I know Paul well enough to think that he is capable of doing that. Okay, that clears out that, thank you.
And the, just as well, the universities featured quite strongly in the interview phase as well, uh, putting forward their position, both as individuals and the interviews are very interesting. A lot of people would begin the interview from a corporate point of view. And then as the half hour went into the next half hour, they'd mellow a bit and talk about their own personal views as well. So we got a nice mix of official desire for Winchester mixed with the personal. Um, and that was the benefit of being online with people as long as we were, often more than an hour.
Yeah, good, good, good. Thank you.
Thanks. Who was next? Councillor, councillor Kresk, councillor Kresk.
Thanks Chair. Um, so I guess, where do, where do I start? I guess the first thing is, I think recognising what you said Chair in terms of this is probably not what we imagined, or what anybody imagined when we started out back in March, when, whenever it was. Um, and I've just been writing down some words of what I've been hearing in terms of my reaction. Um, and there was like innovative, progressive, durable, challenging, disruptive, complex. There's just so much here. Um, and it's incredibly intelligent and sophisticated and it's not something that I get at first read. It takes, it takes time for me to absorb what provided, because it's so different than I think anything I've seen before. Um, so I think my first question is, if I've got sixty seconds to describe what the vision for Winchester is, can you give me that sixty seconds? Um, and it'd be nice if perhaps we all knew what that was, so we could all communicate it very well. Um, and maybe I'll give you a little while to think about those sixty seconds. I think the other question is, can you tell me a little bit more about handbook three? Um, just help me understand it a bit more in terms of what it is and when we're going to get it if we haven't got it already. Just tell me, understand handbook three a bit. Um, and then there's a thing, a piece around, I think some next steps and how we make it real and a conversation about that. Um, and when are we going to see more of you or what, what's next beyond this session, I guess, in terms of where, where do we go from here? Um, so sixty seconds, handbook three and thoughts on what's next. Thanks.
Thanks.
Have we, we're at a part of sixty seconds, for sixty seconds at least, while we try and get our heads around that bit. But thank you Mike for the question. If I just pick up the second bit, which was about handbook three's current status and when it, when it'll be tied up and I'm, maybe Richard and Jenny can think about the sixty-second question. Um, handbook three has been circulated in draft, it is draft. Um, it's a simple formatted document and it runs sort of thirty-six pages or so. The structure's right, the content is, you know, there's nothing more to add as it were, apart from maybe an appendix or two on the, on the process. Um, we have had some feedback from members through Simon and Lorna, the officers that we're working with. And we want to incorporate those comments. Um, but we're, we're almost there really is the answer. Uh, there's a little bit of tidying up around the edges, finishing off that, making those edits. And then it's, then that's the third part of the box set. Handbook one, two and three are then together. Handbook three is primarily aimed at the city authorities, uh, the city council and its partners. We've tried to avoid the use of city council in the language. We've talked about the city agencies or the city authorities, because we know the county council has a role. We know other partners have a role as well. So it's that public sector side and working with a broader um, set of partners in it. So the, the language is deliberately um, uh, broad. And you know, in five years' time, who knows what reorganisations may have happened? I mean, this has to last a decade. So it's aimed on a, on a broader timeframe, but it's, the audience is primarily them. You add to that the project type lists in handbook two and the problems identified in handbook one, and that's your toolkit to move forward. I'm not sure that making it snappy in sixty seconds is really anyone's benefit. That's my thought on that first question of yours. I'm not sure about that, maybe others can come back. The last bit is what happens next? A week today, we've got the, the open house event, which is a sort of finishing off where everyone's invited to talk more about it and ask more questions. A little bit more informal than tonight maybe, a glass of wine and another chat. After that, we want to speak to Simon and Lorna about any support that may be needed to take it further from that point. But as of a week today, we are conclusion, we, we conclude our commission.
Yeah. Sorry.
Go on, go on.
Sorry, um, Mr Finch, Simon Finch just wanted to come in quickly there.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Yes, I think the, um, the challenge for us as well, and we've, we've talked about this um, with the steering group as well that have been involved throughout is to having the vision is fantastic and we'll say we will take that back to the, um, the town forum in January. Um, but what also we need to do after that, it's really just the start of it, that's just the end of phase one. Because then what we need to do, working with the town forum and more widely, is to turn that into actions effectively and how we can use it. Now, what we've started to do, um, and this is something that um, uh, councillor Hutchinson had raised earlier in the process, was um, embedding it within the organisation. So what I did with just the draft was I circulated around a number of key offices as well as the steering group members. And what was really encouraging to me was the fact that Adrian Fox, whom you all know as our, our strategic planning manager. And we were on a, um, a, a, a local planning advisory group meeting yesterday. There's a number of things immediately that we can see in this document that we can translate in actions within the local plan. So that's a place, immediately we can see that's a place to start it. But the challenge for us will be collectively, our officers working with members is then to move that into the next phase about what we start to do to turn this into reality. It's not going to happen overnight and it's a ten-year vision. Um, but that's very much what, what Lorna and myself, working closely with you, yourselves in making that, you know, taking that to the next phase. So this is the end of the first phase, if you like, and then we need to then work out with yourselves about taking it forward into the next phase. But I can already see um, practical stuff that we can take and, for example, use within the local plan context. Thank you.
Thank you, extremely helpful, thank you. Sorry Richard Summers, I cut you off there.
No, not at all. I probably should have allowed you to cut me off completely. Um, I was just going to say that I think it is very difficult to, to summarise. It's kind of like the elevator pitch, isn't it? You know, you want to have the two sentences which sum the whole thing up. Um, I think one of the things that we're conscious of is that we, we need to, uh, that, that within the final version of handbook three, we will um, we will obviously have an executive summary. So perhaps that's the, that's, that'll be the um, the, the most concise version of obviously the contents of handbook three. For the time being, uh, the three principles and the six values that, that are in this presentation are in, in the document that we circulated. Are probably the, the, the quickest way of, of identifying um, a snappy summary, if you like.
Councillor Kresk, were you going to follow up quickly?
Yeah, 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 thanks Chair. And I wasn't being awkward. Um, it's very much just recognising it is sophisticated, it is incredibly intelligent. And despite that, to find a way so I can tell people what we have. And I struggle with that, to be honest.
How about just the one hundred small wins are better than one big win?
Yeah. But I was, I mean, I think what Jenny says absolutely nails it. But the other, the other, what I would, just, just occurred to me was that this vision is about how to do things rather than what to do. So that, that's, that's the key point of the vision. It's about, it's a manual for making change rather than uh, a, um, a glossy brochure about a, a potential future.
Yeah, and I think one addition to those two comments as well, I'll simply read a quote from one of the handbooks from um, somebody who was in one of the teams and they said this simply. What struck me strongly as we started to wrap things up was not the strength or otherwise of our suggestions, but more the power of the process. Uh, I think that translates into, you know, they felt it was a beginning of something that felt different, which was heartening. But yeah, I like Jenny's comment as well. A hundred small wins are better than one great win. Thanks. And if, and if you could articulate that in the executive summary, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Thompson.
Um, thank you Chair. Um, well, I'd like to echo what other speakers have said already about um, it, it is just completely different. And I think we wouldn't have imagined um, something like this when we embarked on the, on the journey. And I have to say, it's really um, um, a credit. a credit to Boyle and Summers that they've been able to set up the groups and actually move forward with this during such a difficult time. So I'd like to thank you for all the work that you've done. My question was all around the age profile of the responders as well as the, I wondered whether you had a question from councillor Ferguson about the geographical spread of the people in the the teams. And I wondered whether you also tried to get an age spread as well. Because when reading through all the documents, it's, and you know, you've formed this view or come to this view yourselves, that, you know, we do tend to miss out on the younger people in Winchester and the younger people having a voice. And I think, you know, something like a vision which is going to last for 10 years is really important to capture that voice. So that was my first question. The other thing is, is what I'm, excuse me, I've read through as far as I can through the different handbooks. I think they're absolutely great. But there is a huge amount to actually study and take in and then be able to build on. And, but one word that keeps coming out across all the different elements were to me, was this, this almost that the council needs to sort of let go and let the community, you know, we need to sort of enable the community to actually get on with some of these, these wins. And I think that that's, you know, that that's really important to allow that to happen. You've used the word enable, that comes up all the time. And, and collaboration. And I think that's absolutely right. You know, as a city council, we can't do everything. And we, we wouldn't want to do everything because we don't want to sort of push everybody into doing things that maybe the community doesn't want. And the way forward is to, is to work collaboratively with our, all sections of the community in whatever project or, you know, in any small way. So I thought it was really good and I'd just also like to ask a cheeky favour actually. I wondered whether, because there's so much in these documents. And of course, we've been sent it on our council iPads. I just wonder whether there's any possibility, you mentioned that you'd printed off copies and given them to members of the groups. And I just wondered whether you could send us all a proper printed copy so that we would have it in our hands and be able to refer to it sort of regularly and really sort of pour over it. Because it's, it's quite a difficult document to just read online. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you councillor. Lots of really good praise there. We're really pleased to hear that. And the age question about young people, we've, across all of that, we've across the whole process, we've been acutely aware that a vision document that looks to the future necessarily isn't about us and the the middle and older age, but it has to work across all areas. And just some things that worked on that was one of the groups, one of the five groups was called lifetimes for that very reason. Because it became aware, we became aware quite early on from the interviews we were holding that young people in Winchester may not have some of the opportunities that other towns have. It may not allow for them to express themselves in ways that they could do. So the lifetimes group started to look at that. But it was also looking at it from the other end as well, that as a more senior person in the city. There's one in the movement group that I manage, she got in touch through the website. She'd not been involved in the project in any other way. She's into her 90s and she gets the bus into the city centre on a daily basis. And she talked about how public transport was a real lifeline for people of her generation and something that we hadn't really appreciated until that point. And we also had at that same time, a short film was made, which is on the website, about the travels of a five, four-year-old girl across the city. And, you know, that scale of the urban environment when you're only very, very small is quite remarkable. So we've captured that experience that, you know, the other, other point in people's sort of lifetime in the city. The social media, we have a lot of people responding under the age of 45. Laura's been on, looking at the stats there. 60% of the people on social media were under 45 and these days that's young, under 45. So we've looked at it in lots of different ways. We also had, we were aware that young people being asked to collaborate around the table digitally or in the real world often feel a bit awkward around with older people. So Jenny, as part of the team, actually set up a dedicated young girl, teenage girl urban design forum. And councillor Kresk was really helpful getting that set up. So we gave them sort of dedicated opportunities. And we also had quite a few people on the working groups that worked in sort of youth education, youth provision. And they were articulating the sort of views that they were hearing on a daily basis from young people. So it's there throughout the process because you're quite right, that's the bit that really, you know, for a vision like this, it has to respond to that that next generation, 2030, you know, it's around the corner in some ways. So we've done our best on that one.
Thank you. I wondered Jenny, if you wanted just to explain a little bit about that design forum for the teenage girls, because that was an important part of this process, that capturing a voice that I don't think we've heard very much.
Yeah, I can talk about that. Yeah, I was, I came about actually because I was kind of thinking about, lots of people talking about the skate park. And I was kind of thinking, I don't know that, you know, me as a perhaps a teenage girl, I would not be hanging around at the skate park. I'd be sort of shyly in my bedroom. And I think there's a lot of teenage girls that are kind of relegated to their, to their bedroom. And I was sort of interested in how teenage girls see the city centre and what they do there. And it was actually a really fascinating workshop. I did one session with them online and then they sent me work that they'd done. And, and I kind of looked at that and incorporated it into the lifetimes manual. And, and it was just really interesting to hear, we did a project where I asked them to redesign a sort of dish-used shop and say what they would like to, what they would like to, what they would turn Marks and Spencer's into when it was a massive kind of open-ended space. And so it was really interesting just to hear their ideas. But actually, all of the things that they were keen on were just about spaces to connect with each other and spaces to meet their friends. They weren't interested in shopping at all, really. What they wanted to do in the city was to kind of see each other, to kind of walk around, have something to eat and connect with each other. And I thought that was really interesting because obviously, you know, city centre's, you know, full of clothes shops. Some people are worrying about the kind of clothes shops closing down and things like that. So it, that, that became a really useful exercise actually, just in terms of determining what, what young women want to do in the city.
Wonderful. Thank you.
That's okay.
I think councillor Murphy was.
Councillor Murphy, I wasn't sure whether councillor Thompson wanted to come back on another question.
Councillor Thompson, did you want to come back?
No, that's fine. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you Chair. And thank you very much for the presentation. There were some really, some fascinating things in there, which I look forward to reading in more detail, especially if I get a hard copy. My main questions were about, I noticed now you talked about developing widespread consensus, which is obviously really important. But you also talk about the Winchester's feeling of stuckness. And those two can quite often conflict and it's how we balance the two. I mean, you also mentioned 100 small wins, which you think is important towards that. But if they're divided out into lots of different areas, will those few small wins be enough to get over the stuckness? I mean, my sort of like, you know, I'm into the climate emergency and that is something that we have to make huge changes in our lives and we have to do them fairly quickly. So how can we build the consensus in that in particular?
I'll start the ball rolling here, if you like. I think you're right. I think it's, it's about kind of enabling the communities, encouraging the communities to realise small projects in their areas. And that's partly for the benefit of that project in its, on its own terms. But partly on the basis of encouraging participation, building trust, kind of fostering that, those resilient communities, which, you know, is part of that kind of climate emergency response. And, and that's the fundamental shift between, you know, mega projects and micro projects. But, you know, in terms of climate emergency, there are, there are obviously lots of things that can be done. I totally agree with you. There are some major, major shifts that need to be made in short, in the short term, if you like. But the approach of doing things on a small basis is the idea of getting to those. But they can in themselves be, those small projects can be sustainable kind of steps in the right direction, I guess. Not a requirement, but they certainly could be to make small projects, small improvements, whether it's encouraging people out of their cars and onto bikes and buses perhaps, is the sort of small project that makes a contribution towards that, that big goal.
I think an image that came, yeah, I agree Rich, an image that's in Handbook One, right back in the, in the summer, is of the difference between trying to push a massive rock uphill and trying to get something small but truthful running downhill like a snowball effect. And there's a, there's every difference between these two approaches. I think there's a philosophical difference here between a very, what you could say is a very 20th century view, trying to get big, huge wins that you can sort of slam down and go, there's a big chunk of something done. And a much more 21st century response emerging all over the world at every grain of society where lots of small things adding up and flocking and changing is actually much more what's needed for a sustainable solution. But I think the difference, the challenge there is a creative one. It's about the context we, we talk about these things in. A very ecology kind of processes or principle is the story we all think we're in. And that's what vision's about. It's writing a story of us that more and more of us feel we are co-writing, that we're co-learning and co-sharing and all feel like we co-own this thing. And that's lots and lots of little stories adding up like pixels on a screen. So I think that this is about storytelling in a way. That sounds philosophical. But we're trying to write new stories of us for a new time. And I think it adds up with lots of little ownerships and testings, another creative principle.
I'd just, just say to conclude that, to keep it focused though on things like the climate crisis and the changes that are needed. Handbook Three talks about the 15-minute city as a way of thinking, which doesn't just allow lots and lots of little things to happen that may be contradictory, that may cancel each other out. There is a lot in Handbook Three that says you need to align these little projects in the same direction. And the 15-minute city thinking is about community, about resilience, about friendship, about bumping into each other on the street. Also about the sort of technical things like reducing CO2 emission and nitrous oxide emission. But it's about the chance encounters in the street that make people happy. Exploring nature in a way that you wouldn't if you were travelling in another, in another direction. It's about bringing economic activity into the suburbs instead of having it concentrated in the city centre. So that one principle and way of thinking aligns things in a way that are supportive of one another, not contradictory. And I think that helps avoid any issue that any little project counts. They all need to play that part in a way. So Handbook Three gives that sort of streamlining, as it were, to that idea.
Thanks. Thanks. Mr Finch, did you want to come in here as well?
Very, very quickly Chair, yes. Just to simply say that picking up on councillor Murphy's point there. By pure coincidence, the strategic team were looking at the 15-minute system and then lo and behold, it appeared in the Handbook Part Two. So that's something which we can definitely take on board in the context of the local plan. And also I was talking to Sue Croker earlier this week about the biodiversity action plan that we're going forward with. And again, there's things in there which chime with empowering communities to take on some of these responsibilities when the city council can't do it. So I can already see overlapped into other things that we're already trying to do, that have come forward out of this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Todd, I think you were, you were next.
Yes, I think I am, because I think I might be, I'm nearly the last one. No, I mean, first of all, I think this is all very inspiring and thought provoking. And thank you for that. And thank you to the people who took part. And there's bits of it that I have enormous sort of sympathy for. And the idea of 15-minute city, the implicit localism and looking out into our neighbourhoods and thinking about them and empowering people to think about them in an active way and not just thinking in terms of what happens in the city centre, I think is, is great. And I, I'm a big fan of getting small wins. And, you know, I'm very glad that you didn't come up with a, with a vision that we should build an opera house or something like that. And that you, and that we are in the space of, of driving things forward in a kind of organic, human scale way, which is after all, how a city's developed. I mean, ultimately, if you wanted to be slightly tongue-in-cheek, you'd say there's only been one big successful project in Winchester that stood the test of time. And that's the cathedral, you know, and everything else. I mean, you could argue that King Alfred did quite a good plan, quite a good job on the street plan, although it had a bit of a rough time in the 70s and 80s. But, but everything else that's happened has often been quite organic and has taken time to develop and reflected the different needs of the place at different times. Two things struck me. One is, one is, are there models of governance? You know, the point that Simon Finch talked about, making this reality. It has quite major implications for how we do things, which is great. And actually, a lot of the things that are talked about, I'd like us to be doing across the whole district and not just in Winchester. Are there, are there people who have taken this kind of approach in the context of how British local government, English local government works? And are there networks of people pushing on this that we can be tapping into and learning from? And I suppose maybe a point for officers and as part, a wider point. And as part of that, have people managed to make partnerships between, in two-tier government, deliver this kind of engagement and change? Because there's a lot in here, for example, about movement. And we are not the council in charge of movement, although we have been able, for example, to square through close working with the county council to take the lead on certain movement projects and drive them ahead. But I'm interested in, yeah, I'm interested in how we make a lot of this change and how we do things real. And if there are people who can help us get there more quickly, because they've tackled some of the practical issues of doing it within an English local government legal and organisational framework.
Thanks. Who wants to answer that?
Jenny, do you want to start?
Well, all I wanted to say actually, and it was a small point, was just that we got an email straight off the website this morning from the Wildlife Trust saying that they'd really enjoyed reading the handbook and they want to get involved. And they want to kind of get involved with the council doing this. And so I sort of thought, I thought this morning when we saw that email, that actually this is already starting to happen because it's already attracting organisations that are keen to get involved and jump on board with this. And actually, it's, I think it's a question of like kind of gathering these people who have already got expertise and sort of, you know, enabling them to take the lead with things. In terms of local government, maybe Rich is a better place to answer that one.
Yeah, councillor, you asked it, are other places doing this sort of thing? Sort of yes and no. We did a lot of research as part of this to find out, to see if there are models of reinventing local government. And there are some London boroughs that are doing quite innovative things, which we, we can share some of that. But no, not really. What we've got here with Winchester is quite bespoke. It flowed from extensive research in the first part of the work. The working groups have not only validated that hypothesis about how not what, but actually started to prove there's a new way, a new model that can work. It was only four weeks, there were only five groups and it's been very successful. So I think there's a bit of, there's a bit of pioneer spirit here in Winchester that I think you can, you can, you know, it's not unreasonable to think that you're going to make some missteps. You may be going to find your feet a bit on it, but, you know, persevere with it. And maybe in a, in a year or two, Winchester will be at the local government conference talking about what it's done and how it's reinvented itself. Maybe that's the Maybe that's the sort of kudos that you can get out of it. There are things going on around the country of this sort, but not not in the way we're talking about here. There is a long timeframe ahead. There's a decade. It's a vision for 2030. So you've got time is on your side to a degree to get it right. We heard from councillor Murphy about the climate crisis. Maybe we don't have as much time as we all think we have. So those quick wins are important, but they will build and build. And the other point you made is about the two-tier authority and Hampshire. And I was the facilitator of the movement group and it came up a lot there. But, you know, there's certain things they'd like to do, but it's decisions to be made at a county level rather than a, not even a city level, but a neighbourhood level. And, you know, some of the ideas that didn't quite make the handbook were about, do you need a Winchester movement authority? That's, you know, much more low, it's like the neighbourhood plan version of transport planning, you know, down to a scale which is more responsive to people's needs. I think this comes back to how we the language we've used in Handbook Three. We've talked about the city agencies or the city authorities, because everything we say in Handbook Three applies to the county council as much as it does to the city council. This comes back to Simon Finch's point about what happens next and how we disseminate this information, get it over. The county need to be aware of this one great win initiative and what it means, because they've got to get on board with the new way of thinking as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. Just to add to councillor Todd's question, are there authorities overseas who are doing similar things, who maybe who maybe have similar structures to English local government?
I'll jump into the the space that's available. I think I would suggest that Richard's last answer probably answers that one, unfortunately. I think that what we what we've put together with you and your officers is a bespoke approach, if you like. And and I think one of the things I will just add to that is that I think that one thing we've come across, clearly, we've come across some members who who in this group who get where we're coming from. But we've also come across a number of officers within the authority, within Winchester City Council, who get the the point we've been making as well. And I think one of the things that would be a way amongst others to implement the vision would be to enable and empower those officers. So maybe, and I think actually there was an interesting point made, I don't know whether I should touch on it, touch on it in this meeting, but about the next director of place that's coming forward in terms of that being a perhaps a key or, you know, key part of their job role would be to to implement the vision.
I just quickly come back on Barking and Dagnum has got an initiative called participatory city. And there is similarities there that we found out very late in the day. It was only a few weeks back as Handbook Twos were coming through. But Barking and Dagnum has taken a sort of co-creativity approach to some of its existing community groups. And that's the only one we found that that has, I think maybe someone needs to maybe get in touch and maybe there's a town twinning sort of arrangement that you can learn from each other. But that's the turn to councillor Todd's point. That's the only one that came across our radar. But yeah, Richard Summers' point, there's a new director of place imminent. This is maybe something that, to keep that momentum from within the city council, that's something that could work really well.
Thanks. Councillor Edith, have you got, this is a new question, so I would like to move to debate.
I was, yeah, no, no, I was wondering whether we were going to have a debate. Because I see it's, what, 22/8? And we've still got quite a bit of the agenda to cover. And I was just wondering.
No, I thank you. That that was my going to be my question as well, given the questions that we've had. If does anyone have anything they wish to contribute in debate? If not.
I mean, I did have one or two things I just wanted to say, if I could say them very quickly. I mean, I agree with councillor Crask. It is a very long document. I mean, we read it because we're councillors and we should read it. But I wonder if it's something that we are producing for the layperson, et cetera, whether there ought to be a sort of digest. It's been an impressive exercise. I also agree about the importance of realising that a lot of the bits that we value most about Winchester have grown at the historical parts, grew organically before the age of planners and vision documents, et cetera. And I kind of like the way that that happened. And we kind of don't want to strangle things by becoming too planned. And I like what Lucille said about, you know, we're not actually going to try to control everything. This is more a sort of collaboration. What concerns me slightly about the document is, you know, there obviously is some very keen cyclists there and I I I respect them for that. But I always stick up for walking and wherever we have mixed cycling and walking as a sort of great new innovation, I feel the walkers lose out and I worry about things like the wares and I worry about more things like the wares. And I noticed the talk of a need for another corridor from St Cross into the city centre. Well, we've already got we've already got the that very splendid new path that was made from the viaduct. The only possible place where there could be a cycle path is about the only path in Winchester that is actually not a bridle path and is for walkers, the one along beside what Winchester College call the logi. And I would hate the creation of any more cycle paths at the expense of walkers. I walk everywhere and I think walkers should be kind of stuck up for. You use two and a half times more calories walking. Then the 15-minute city, lovely idea. I think maybe we need to call it a 30-minute city. I live in St Michael's Gardens, which is only just outside the walled city, and it's a 10-minute brisk walk for me to the Guildhall. So a 15-minute city. I like the concept. And okay, one doesn't want to be too rigid in interpretation of it. But, you know, actually, from the point of view of planning, it's actually quite difficult to create other shopping centres and things. Applications tend to get turned down because they would weaken the high street. So I mean, I like the idea and I can kind of see what it's driving at. But the more you think into actually 15 minutes, I was just wondering whether there's another way of expressing it. But anyway, fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councillor Scott.
Thank you, Chair. I think it's an excellent piece of work. I remember the vision of which a number of years ago the town forum undertook and the good results from that. And sometimes cast my mind back on on social media. Sometimes one of the fantastic things that residents do is look back on memories, memories in Winchester, memories of old school days. I've just gone on the line for the old Montgomery Valley Main School, which is obviously now we know as Kings when it was amalgamated with Denmark. And the fascinating conversations and comments that come out of people just literally have lived in Winchester, may have moved out of Winchester, but they've got some strong memories of this lovely city of ours. And I think this piece of work is adding to the memories of Winchester. And I think it's exciting moving forward, and members should be excited moving forward about the next 10 years and what we can see our city involved into. And we all play a part in that, us as members, but us as also citizens of Winchester as well. And I take comfort that it's just not down to the city council to do, that we actually play our part, but actually, we actually will join forces with other people, proactive residents, volunteer groups, other organisations that want to buy into the vision. And this will be us making memories of a city in the next 10 years. Because I do think there's a big love for Winchester and I think a lot of people love this place. And they've got so much of their childhood, teenage years, marriages, you know, vested into this place. And the memories are very fond when you look on the various sites about, you know, Winchester memories or even we've got Starmont memories and all that sort of stuff. So I would just like to say thank you for the guys and girls who have done this fantastic job for the town forum. And I would really look forward to seeing Winchester in the next 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more debates? Because I think, if not, that was a wonderful summary to end on. I think councillor Scott is absolutely right. This project has the provides us with the opportunity to make wonderful memories for our children and for future generations through experiences that people can have as they walk to school, as they can travel and experience our wonderful city, our ecology, our amazing history. So thank you all again for all the work that you've put into this. Thank you again to the members of the focus groups for the work that you've done to to produce these handbooks and to give us these ideas. And I do share everyone's thoughts that these are concepts that we are hearing through multiple through multiple pathways at the moment. So it's really, it's really great to have those concentrated into these documents so we can hopefully move forward into the future and deliver this for Winchester. Because I think this is going to be a wonderful outcome and a wonderful legacy for Winchester. So thank you all for the work that you've done. Councillor Green, I can see you've just put your hand up. Did you want to say?
Yeah, my apologies.
Quickly, note the time.
We didn't get an answer to Lucille's question originally about the making the hard copies to members.
Okay, well.
We can probably do that at this end as well, Derek.
Yeah, we would certainly be very happy to do that. I think it would be very useful actually for as many people as possible to get a hard copy of the documents. Because I think, as you say, and councillor Thompson said, they're much more easy to read.
Yeah, I saw that as well.
Easy to refer to.
Possibly one of the libraries as well, so people can access it. Don't be old fashioned about this.
Yes, and that's keep an institutional memory, so they're not lost when people leave. Absolutely.
We've been planning a little ceremony where we turn up for an Instagram photo shoot with somebody to receive a kind of special pack of all of them with a hat and a cape. You can dig out the mayor, that would be great.
I mean, just to briefly say, on behalf of everybody in our team, we've had such a fascinating year producing this. And we're really grateful to the town forum and the council for giving us the opportunity. So thank you very much and we hope to see everybody next week, this time, a bit earlier, actually, 7.30. And we'll see you all there.
Wonderful. Looking forward to it. Thank you all. Good evening.
Thank you. Cheers.
Thank you. I realise that we still need to do the formal part. We need to note the recommendations from from the paper. Are those noted?
Agreed.
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 So the next item on the agenda is the Winchester Town Account. Now, I think Mr Botham is going to be leading this paper rather than Mr Kennedy.
That's right, Chair. Mr Kennedy's had to give his apologies. So sorry for that, but I'll just take you briefly through the paper and I'll do my best at covering any questions that members may have. And remember to be aware that you'll be considering the final town account budget and setting the precept at your January meeting. So this report really just sets out the medium-term position over the next four years, the options that you may have open to you and the impact that some of those may have on the on the town account as it stands. And we, I think you set the precept, precept at 3% last year. The accounts set out in this appendix assume a 2% increase. But that's clearly one of the decisions that you'll you'll need to consider. And Mr Kennedy in his in his paper has set out the the potential impact of setting at different levels. So if you raise a 3%, that raises, you can raise a potential additional £10,000 as a result, and that's indicated in the tables. And as far as the revenue concerned, there are a couple of items that Mr Kennedy highlights in the report. And that's the emerging concern around the cleaning and maintenance of bus shelters, that that could have a financial impact on the on the town account for next year. Couple of fees and charges issued. It does make reference in this report to a report we were planning to bring to this cycle on the potential for reviewing the sports pitch and open and open space charges. That wasn't considered appropriate to bring to this meeting, so we will bring that to January. We didn't really want to be considering the detail around setting sports pitch booking fees at a time when people can't use sport pitches. And we didn't, we were unclear about the future of it. So hopefully, by January, hopefully next week, it'll be clearer or whatever. But by January, we'll have been in a better position to understand the impact on on clubs and those facilities. So you'll see that paper alongside the detailed budget paper at the same time. And the, yeah, the report sets out the impact of SIL, the SIL provision and capital. Obviously, the big capital item that you consider each year is the programme for play areas. And I understand that report is also scheduled for your January meeting as well. The, Mr Kennedy has met with your subgroup, your budget subgroup, and discussed discussed options in preparing this paper. And one of the things that that group has considered is the potential for borrowing to cover some of your the emerging projects. And so what Mr Kennedy's done in paper has just set out the potential for borrowing there. So borrowing based on an assumption of borrowing costs at 3%, so it shows what the cost of borrowing over a 25-year period of £100,000 would be and how you would service that cost. We are anticipating those borrowing costs reducing slightly in the near future. We have, government have consulted about reducing the PWLB rates for this sort of project spend. We're awaiting the confirmation and the outcome of that consultation. So that's why we showed the two options in the paper there. And I probably won't say anything more than that. Happy to take any questions. I'll do my best on the detail. But obviously, Mr Kennedy is our expert on your town account. But happy to take any questions members may have.
Thank you. And just to note the recommendations for this paper, that we identify any budget issues to consider further in advance of recommending a town account budget to Cabinet in January and to consider any feedback to Cabinet in relation to the wider budget consultation. Just to note, councillor Todd has had to leave to go to another meeting now, just for members of the public who may be listening. Do we have any questions on the budget paper? Councillor Weir.
Thank you, Chair. And I welcome this paper as usual. I think it really sets things out very clearly for us. Obviously, there's two areas that I'm going to speak about them later on. But we have not funded in any significant measure the new pavilions at the KGV sports ground or indeed the work on the the park around the pavilions that we are looking at in the KGV informal group. So it is very useful to have that financing costs there because clearly the sorts of figures we're going to be looking at if we were to investigate the borrowing approach to funding this will have an impact on this budget going forward. So it paints quite a rosy picture at the moment. But if we are realistic about some of the commitments we've got, it might start to look a little different, I think. Would you agree, Mr Botham?
Yeah, in saying it paints a rosy picture, just by looking at the detail in the appendices, it does show that we try to maintain a balance in a reserve of 10% of annual expenditure. And we can't even achieve that through the proposals as they're set out. It does drop next year slightly below that that target. But through, you know, provided that we continue with the plans as they stand, that does redress itself. So however, if you were to consider any significant additional expenditure, I think it does demonstrate that the capacity for that is very limited. So that's why I think it is valid to look at the potential for the potential impact of that borrowing and for you to consider how you might fund that in the future moving forward.
Thanks. Any further questions? Councillor Scott.
Sorry, Chair, I was just about to type out a question when you asked, and then I suddenly pressed the wrong button and it came out of A while in the queue. And then I suddenly pressed the wrong button and it came out of A while in the queue, so.
We knew what you meant.
I suddenly sort of think, oh no, I'm not a typer. In regards to moving forward with projects, how close, Richard, do we try and negotiate? Sometimes if it's a win-win, obviously in the town forum area, how close do we align ourselves with the Cabinet? Because obviously we are under the sort of city council cabinet administration, even though we're meant to be here as the organisation, as if we are a parish council. And I know that our monies are quite tight as a town forum. But moving forward with the excellent vision presentation, as we've known, we want to move things forward in the city of Winchester. Where does the crossover lie? Does it always, because obviously it won't just primarily sit with the town forum with some of the proposal projects or the little win-wins that we were mentioning. When does it sort of align, when do we align ourselves with the Cabinet budget and spend that will come through then, even though it would be a win-win for the town forum?
I'm sure Mr Kennedy can give you a more eloquent explanation than I can. But principally, the town account funds those services which are directly impacting on the town rather than the wider district. Of course, there's going to be some areas of significant crossover. And in setting out the terms of reference for this town forum, a lot of those have been considered and are currently under consideration, I think, by the governance group as well about, you know, what falls within town forum, what falls outside of town forum. I think the crossover really comes around the precepts because you can make a recommendation on your precept, but it will be limited by the decision of Cabinet for the wider district as well. We are capped at that £5% or 3% of £5 overall for the district. And the town needs to operate within that. Obviously, the decisions you make are, you know, have some flexibility there because of the size of the town account compared to the general fund. But that's broadly how, you know, where the crossover comes.
Thanks. Does that answer your question, Counselor Scott?
Well, sort of Chair, but I guess I think this has always been the sort of misdemeanor with the town forums. Obviously, when do we set there to sort of launch into the Cabinet administration domain, as it were? Like, because obviously we don't want to tread on the toes of the Cabinet and administration. But it's just literally knowing if we are moving forward as a town forum with a very good vision for the next 10 years. Clearly, some of the projects can't all be spent within the town forum. Even if we looked at the precept or put the precept up or whatever we do, we would still need to probably go hand in hand with the Cabinet administration in moving some of the projects forward. So as I said, it would be a win-win for the town forum. But clearly, we'd need to have some sort of steer from the Cabinet and the administration about what they would perceive would be the right projects in Winchester as well as just us getting carried away as a town forum, that what we would like to do when actually we haven't got the finances to do it.
But I think my response to that would be that you're clearly constrained by the scope of the town account. And that's the point I think that Counselor Weir was pointing towards in her question. But as far as the ability to, there are a lot of things that happen in the city have a wider benefit to the district. And then it's perfectly relevant to consider the balance between general fund and town account investment in those where they are purely for the residents of the district, sorry, of the city. They should be funded from within this town account. And how you spend the town account is determined by the town forum, not by the Cabinet. So that's within your control. Again, that control, the scope is limited by the limitations of the funds you have.
Yeah. So I think those are the discussions we will be having as we move forward. Counselor Crest, you've got a question.
Yeah, thanks. Not sure it's a question or an observation which kind of ties into support, I think, from what Counselor Scott is saying in terms of what monies have we got to support the vision work. You know, and what's there immediately is the grant scheme. Looking at how that can be offered to and positioned around the vision. So there's some thinking around there perhaps. And what else can we ensure it's directed to or in support of anything that might come out from that vision? Obviously, the recreation and open spaces is the biggest chunk of the budget. So there just might be some thinking we might be able to do just in terms of where we spend the money that we do have and what our responsibilities are and how that might be lined up towards what might come out from the vision. So just a thing and observation more than a question, I think.
No, thank you. That's helpful. If there are no more questions, we'll move to debate. Is there any debate? No. So we'll note the recommendations identifying that delivery of the vision is a budget issue that we will need to think about for the coming decade. And we'll feed that back to Cabinet appropriately. And we move next to the informal group verbal update. So the chairs of each of the informal groups are invited in this session to provide an update on what they've been working on since the last meeting, if there is an update that they would like to provide. Counselor Weir, I know you alluded to this in the last agenda items. I wondered if you wanted to kick off here.
Thank you, Chair. So I've got updates from two informal groups. First of all, as I've already mentioned it, the KGV group has met again with officers looking both at proposals for the replacement pavilion and the wider park plan. And I think we're pleased with the way this is moving forward. We have seen revised outline plans for the pavilion. We are now waiting for officers to update the costings on those which will obviously are needed for the 2122 budget. So they're not actually included in the figures that we've seen before us this evening. Once we've had a chance, hopefully at the January meeting to look at those, we'll be looking at going towards a detailed design that can be taken forward in due course for planning consent. So we're making, I think, steady progress with pavilion proposals. We still have to establish how we're going to fund that, subject to the costings coming forward. On the wider park plan, we've also looked with officers at how we can bring forward improvements right around the park from the play areas and to the mugger to the exterior of the sports pitches. These are all governed by the fields in trust status, which means that the focus has to be on sports. But we really want to open up that park to the public so that they have an area of which they can access and make better use of. And again, I think we're making good progress there. We'll be looking at bringing some costings to the January meeting for inclusion in next year's budget. So I think that was just an informative, that work is going forward. If any members have questions that we need to raise with officers, I think it would be appropriate to bring them to us outside this meeting. I just wanted to say something on the grant situation. I think mentioned, we're still running our small grants programme for small grants up to £500. This is still open for applications for one-off activities. Our panel was due to meet today. We have eight applications so far. We've actually postponed it to next week. But we will be looking at the eight applications we've had so far. But we still have grant available, even if we approve those eight, we've still got monies available. So I've agreed with officers that we should keep this open on a rolling basis for the rest of this financial year. And that our grants team will meet every two months between now and the end of the year to address any further applications that come in. We think that this is going to play an important part in helping those organisations who may not have accessed other grants during the COVID crisis. And on that theme, we've also looked again, we approved last time to up the threshold for the crowdfunder to 3,000 and that is now up and running. But we've also talked to officers about being more flexible around how that crowdfunding monies can be applied. So up to now, crowdfunders, again, it was for projects, for one-off projects. We think that for the rest of this financial year, it would be appropriate to be more flexible in the criteria and that for organisations who want to use the crowdfunder route, that 50% of what they apply for through crowdfunder could be used for core costs, for day-to-day running costs. We know that the uncertainty around accessing funding for core activities is preventing organisations applying for project funding. So we want to help organisations overcome that uncertainty. And I hope that colleagues would agree with me that for this financial year, that's a good way forward. Thank you.
Are there other chairs who would like to provide an update? I know not everyone is here.
I can be brief, Chair.
Yep. Counselor Huscock and then Counselor Hatterson.
Yeah, we've done North Walls work now. We've agreed with the consultants what the protocol was going to be. They've done some consultations, a bit more to do. And they are now working on drawing up a plan to bring to town forum in the new year. So briefly, that's it. I would emphasise to anybody listening that this will not include the area which is currently occupied by the leisure centre and it will not include the area. It won't suggest any changes to the area where the fixed pitches are for the tennis and the five-a-side football. Or as far as we know at the moment, there won't be any change to the positioning of the skateboard park. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Hatterson.
Thank you very much. Two quick things really, I suppose. First is obviously we've talked about the vision, so I don't think I'll say very much more about that other than I think that Boylan Summers have done a really interesting piece of work and it was very heartening to see the response. But also going forward, I think it's going to be a real challenge for the town forum to see how they can basically mould the vision and drive that way of thinking through both the council and also partners. So that's just one thing to park. And the other report I just wanted to make very briefly was from the High Street Group, which hasn't actually met very recently. But it's due to meet in December and I think its date has been circulated. But more importantly, I wanted to draw people's attention to the St Maurice's cupboard, where the walls have now been painted and that has made a phenomenal difference. And I do very much hope that we are on the sort of the beginnings of the later slopes of trying to get the lighting and the. That's all going ahead. And also, we had a presentation to the town forum, I think it was probably last January, about the Future 50 work that was done by the heritage team, conservation team in Winchester. And they brought out a very interesting report, which I think certainly might have been a bit overlooked in September from their work. And I think that will inform the High Street Group going forwards. And I think that's something that I hope we'll be able to have a presentation on or a further discussion early in the new year.
Wonderful. Thank you. If there are no other updates, the governance group has met with officers to discuss options for the future structure of the town forum, looking at our terms of reference, looking at what we should be able to discuss in this forum, what in future we should be looking to do. So as a result of that work, we need to meet as a group of members to discuss how we want to proceed with those plans. I do note that we need to update the lead officer on the informal groups list for the planning group.
Thank you, yeah.
The last item on the agenda today is just to note the work programme for the rest of the year. There's a few papers have been mentioned today that have been, will be moved to a more appropriate time. But obviously, in these times, they've moved a few times already and we're still not in a position where it would be appropriate to discuss them. So hopefully, they will be ready for the next meeting, fingers crossed. We are also hoping to have a presentation from the Hampshire Cultural Trust at the next meeting or in the March meeting. They're keen to come and speak to us. So that will be added to the agenda for one of the remaining meetings for this year, hopefully January. Can we note the work programme for the year?
Agreed.
Thank you. With that, we are eight minutes over, which I think given the discussion on the vision, that's doing really well. So thank you all for a really helpful, really positive discussion this evening. Hope you all have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good night.
Thank you very much, Kathleen.